Let's call the meeting order, please. See, Josh and I excuse at the moment, he should be along. Mark German is joining us by Zoom. Take a motion to skip over item two, consideration of the meeting minutes from January twenty six, twenty twenty two.
So.
Second, second, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Business. Evans, timber appraisers state in New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration. What is considered site work and new timber harvesting laws, et cetera? He's in the audience. Rick, can you hear us?
Rick Evans, do you want to unmute yourself? Are you there?
Mark, can you hear us? You wave your hand if you can hear us here. Okay, okay.
Well, let's give him another thirty seconds.
Just a question, is the voluntary lot merger, is the, it looks like the only decision we have to make tonight? That's a quick one, wouldn't?
I don't think they have all their paperwork.
Yeah, they, they, I put them on the agenda and then we realized we didn't have to check in the original. So they're putting it off.
So it's not on the agenda?
Yeah. Rick Evans, can you hear us?
Well, let's, I mean, let's move on. I don't know if we have a technical difficulty or what. All right. Subtle number one, South Peak Resort, Resort Development, Mark Rosian and Horizon Engineering, John Rosoka. We got it, South Peak Resort. Further discussion, we saw the resort basis of design.
So, Mark, Rosian is on Zoom. So kind of, we were here last month, just to do a quick intro, but I mentioned we were going to be here this month, this, this meeting to just talk a little bit about kind of a first initial little project here to talk to you guys about. So what I got here is kind of an overall plan that shows kind of the existing and south subdivision layout. It's color coded here. And really, what we're here to talk about tonight is. Oh, sure, yeah, and I have a big one as well. Is truly just talk about doing some additional infill subdivision lots to kind of further build out the existing area in South Peak. So basically, these are existing lots, most of them are part of the larger contiguous parcel. The way the color coding is a little bit, is a little confusing, but the green is essentially existing parcel lots that Mark holds right now. The blue lots are the ones that we're proposing to create. So basically, these would be new building lots. Most of these, if it wasn't for the blue coating on here, would be part of the overall larger South Peak lot.
So they'd be part of the white area.
Yeah, they would be part of that big white area. So we're talking about pulling most of these out with the exception of there is one lot, it would be this one right here. This one is an existing single lot that's been carved out. And we're talking about, it's this one right here, yeah, that we're talking about taking that lot and dividing it into two. So essentially, there probably, we'd like to get into this a little bit more detail. We don't have to do this tonight, but on the, the, the structure of the subdivision application, it's probably two applications here because it's two different lots of record. Most of these lots will be in one application because they're part of the bigger lot, but then that one where we're going two into, one into two would be a separate application. We've gone through the South Peak agreements and the zoning ordinance and don't see any showstoppers here for doing this from our perspective.
There was an AD restriction to make this one into two?
I don't believe so, we're still digging on that. And we'll make sure to confirm that, we haven't found anything to this point that suggests there's an AD restriction to doing anything. We have, we have lots, the minimum lot size is met, all the other criteria are met. So as long as we can, you know, go through your requirements and make sure we got billable lots there. And we will do that before submitting an application, but that's, that's kind of our plan.
So, so these are all new lots?
These would be, the blue would be new.
It would, it would change density.
Yes, it would impact, it would come against the density count. Yep, yep. I mean, again, pretty much consistent with what's there right now, whether all, you know, we believe most of these, or if not all of them, will end up being feasible building lots. But again, we're going to determine that, we're not going to submit on anything that's not feasible. Once we run through all the requirements. But we really just wanted to do an initial presentation, you guys, just let you know what's coming and see if there's anything that you guys want to see. Now, these are all lower lots, so they don't, they're not impacted by the water situation. So there's really no issue there. So I guess that's, you know, it should be pretty simple for this little, this first pass.
How big are the lots?
The range in size, I forget the, they're, they're all, I believe, above fifteen thousand, I think they're all, they're all conforming.
So anyone have any questions?
I've had a whole lot of time to review it, just received the information today.
Yeah, and again, this isn't really a formal application, it's more just to have a discussion.
Yeah, does this conform with the homeowner's agreement?
Yes, it will.
It will, meaning you're going to change the homeowner's agreement to conform with these new lots?
Yeah, so Mark, Mark maybe can speak a little bit about that, Mark controls the project.
Can you guys?
Okay, go ahead.
So these lots conform to what was the same guy or bylaws that the association had when they changed them to do the additional lots down on a lower level. So it was just that they stopped adding, adding these lots at that point. But that's why, if you look at the design and the intent of these lots there, to mirror what is already existing in those areas.
But, but it does not conform to the agreement as it existed prior to that modification, is that correct?
I'd have to check, I, I do believe it does conform, but that, that, that we can, we can confirm that. I'm happy to get those informations from the attorneys that are more familiar with the exact agreements of what the.
I, I'm having trouble finding the maps, the charts, are, are these lots located?
Let me fix this.
Hold on. Okay. Mark German, why don't you speak first?
Asking whether they're located in throughout South Peak or they're just, are they confined to the area that was in, in the extension of South Peak Road, or where are they located? I, I, I know that Carol just emailed them to me, but I can't, I can't do them both at the same time.
All right, Ron, put it up to the camera.
So these lots are primarily, they're all in the phase, primarily in phase two of the most recent lots on the lower road. And then the other two are in phase one, one being a larger lot, you can see where it was divided on the lower, you know, row, but not on.
I can't see anything, but I'll take a look at it later.
What, what's the name of this development here that you're adding these lots to? This subdivision, does it have a name?
The new subdivision?
Well, no, it looks like you're going to add these lots to the green, right, force them, put them into that homeowners association?
Mark, which homeowners association are you, would, would these be part of?
This is all part of South Peak Resort, so everything in the neighborhood for the entire project will be part of South Peak Resort. So there's not a separate association or separate.
So this isn't a separate standalone association yet?
No, no, that was not the, again, infill lots. Oh, okay, yeah, yep.
These will be all paying the same dues, same guidelines, same building restrictions, same, all the right rules and regulations that are existing in South Peak as they are today. These lots will have to meet those standards, so that way they'll have the same.
But those standards are different than they were, for example, five years ago or ten years ago. And the, the minimal, the minimal house size has been decreased and, and so on, because it had to be, given the size of the lots went down to fifteen thousand or, or twenty thousand instead of thirty five thousand or whatever it was before. That's just a point, just a question point, that's all.
We will make sure we address that in the application, conformance with all the agreements.
Well, the way you're addressing it right now is that you're going to conform the agreements ex post facto to the status quo that you want to arrive at, which is not the same as maintaining a pre-existing agreement. I mean, I realize that the state of the law in New Hampshire is such that if a developer controls a development, then the developer is able to retroactively, if you will, or prospectively modify the HOA because he controls the majority of the shares. I just happen to think that that's not the expectation of people when they buy property. And I think it frankly is difficult and going forward to deal with. I think it's a, I, I think it's a, I, I think it's a breach of trust personally, that's my own personal opinion.
So I would comment that these lots will meet the existing bylaws as they are. So these lots don't need to be, we don't need to change any bylaws to put these lots on there. Everything that's already previously done.
Comment stands as stated, because those laws were, were changed with the sale, with the sale of the sixty-three lots about a year and a half ago or two years ago. And I'm, I'm just commenting that the common view of what you do when you sign a homeowner's agreement in most jurisdictions in the world is not the same as here, it seems, that's just a comment, has nothing to do with what you've done, Mark.
All right, Paul?
So these green ones are already current, right?
Yes.
And the blue ones are the new ones. So this is obviously a change in density, does that mean that the master plan has to be changed? And, and the reason I would ask would be that the, obviously the butters in the group, and some of the green may not be happy because they may have, if they bought.
Well, Mark controls the green, so.
Are any of those sold?
The ones in the green are owned by the developer.
Yeah.
The ones in the white, I believe, are sold.
Yeah, the individual lots are sold and then the big white is owned by the.
So none, none of the green are sold?
I don't believe, well, they're changing every day, but as of the time this plan was produced, no, they, Mark held them.
Okay. That makes it easier. I do think it changes the density, which changes.
That will, this, this will, this will be part of.
Can I finish or what?
Hold on, Paul, wait, Mark, go ahead.
If it changes the density, does that change the master plan?
Um, I believe it's going to come up, so I'd have to check into that for sure. How can you make a note to look into that?
It changes the master plan, it changes the water.
I can't think of.
The water, the sewer, the, all of that, right? I mean, it has to be updated.
Well, that's, that, yeah, that was the intent, basically, you have, there's a master agreement that has a vested density in it. So basically, there's a running tally that when Mark develops lots, whether it be one, two, a hundred, whatever, that, that tally is updated every time, the tape, there's a running tally of that, and those tables get back, you know, the table, those get backed out of the allowed until he reaches his density somewhere down the road that's been approved. That's the way I understand the process working, it's usually the way a master development agreement works.
I believe those calculations are in the packet, actually, what's been, what's been permitted so far out of the total. Okay.
Yeah, so we can, we, we certainly, in every subdivision that we come to the board, we will present, and this is the way I do it for other projects too, will present. It's a very simple table that shows the density that's allowed, and then what were, what's been taken out before, and then what's being proposed to take out now and what's left. To make, basically make that accounting very clear and easy to follow, because otherwise, if you don't do it that way, it gets lost and it gets really hard to track. Yeah, so we, so we would, we would come, every time we come to the board with a subdivision, it takes, that impacts the density. It's not really updating the master plan per se, but it's updating that calculation that the town is keeping track of to that density, so basically, and, and whatever mechanism the town wants to, 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 to treat that as, but usually it's, it's in the approval.
But the master plan deals with certain, certain phases and certain density in each phase, right? So if there's changes that, then.
I mean, the master plan is a set number of units and every development they bring in.
Every phase that they.
Subdivision, the site plan.
Right, there's only so much that's approved now, right?
Correct.
And what he's saying is that.
So this is a new approval he's seeking.
Yeah, so this would be a new approval, be another phase, and then that phase will be backed out of the overall master.
And I mean, I guess.
I mean, I guess it's, if you're questioning.
It goes before, it goes before the public anyway, so I suppose it's probably no difference, as long as it doesn't.
I mean, I guess. Master plan need to be updated in, in and of itself? I mean.
Well, I guess that's the point that I was trying to make, or the question I had is that, so if you're going to be making changes along the way, at what point does a master plan and all the rest of the documents get updated to reflect these changes as, as one broad specific?
So, yeah, a couple of questions there, that packaged in that. So the, the master plan itself, again, my idea of a master plan is that the master plan shows the intent for the project. So you're not showing all the individual little pieces, it's like, big picture, thirty thousand foot view, here's what we want to do, here's how many units we're developing in the town. And the developer at the time went back and forth on what the carrying capacity of that property was, what the town would allow from the density, and that was all kind of hashed out back at that point, and now there's a number. And that number exists in the file, and now we're, we're going after that number, we're basically dropping that number down with every project we come in. So the master plan update, so something like this, which is infill of basically an existing subdivision, we're just subdividing further within that existing subdivision, not changing the land use, it's not really changing anything that's being proposed out there, it's not, I mean, we're not putting Walmart, we're not doing something completely different than what was contemplated in the master plan. So in my mind, we're talking about just keeping track of the, the accounting of it. Making sure that everybody knows that the next time we come in with a project, wait a minute, last time they took eight units out of the density, so now we're eight units less, and then we come back in. So that way, everybody knows every step of the way, what's left from that previous approval. If we come in with something wholesale different from what was approved before, completely different, going to do something that doesn't relate to the past master plan and it doesn't fit under it, then I would envision needing a full update of that.
Okay, I think some of the stuff we've done, you know, it's different, you know, not here with previous developments, it's different to what, you know, plans show, the original master plan.
Again, I don't know, I wasn't part of that process, so you guys are going to have to forgive me, I'm just trying to get educated like you are here, so just talking this through is helpful for me.
Researcher, I believe the five single family lots that came in in January twenty fourteen, it was supposed to be condos, if my memory serves me right. So I mean, you have made changes, so I guess, so I guess, you know, his question is, when did?
What, at what point do the changes significant enough and, and under what, under what framework does that update need to be done?
Well, I think those are people that are, the, the facts, I mean, Mark's obviously an owner of South Peak, so I mean, some of the owners may have, and, and this will go through the public process for sure.
Oh, yeah.
At some point they can have their, their ability to make comments.
I guess what I look at it is that, that they were adding, I didn't have these up, whatever, if they were adding ten lots to the right of the bridge, there's nothing else. The master plan calls for that to come before the board. You know, no outsiders, public hearing, the whole process. Well, just because they're on the left side where there's already some other development, I don't think it, it, it triggers a change in the master plan, it just says that we take that same process and, and do it over here, is it a change in the master plan? No, it's a, it's a, it's a additional subdivision piece to the same thing. And as you said, if you were going to put in a factory, well, that doesn't fit in with the master plan. The master plan was for condominiums, hotels, and single family lots with a blend of those. That's what this is, and that's why when we went back and looked at the condos, it wasn't a change in the master plan, it was a change in the details where, where.
Right.
You know, the subdivision approval under the master plan called for whatever it was, fifteen condo units or something, and come back for subdivision approval, I mean, um, land use approval, subdivision approval, I guess, to, to change that to five family lots, still under the same master plan. So I don't see this as a change in the master plan at all, I see it as, as the process that was outlined in the master plan. To every time you have a new subdivision, you come, come forward. This is a different sort of subdivision where it's one here, one there, as opposed to taking, you know, fifty acres, putting a vote in and put a bunch of house lots on. So, so, so geographically, it's different, but conceptually, it's, it fits right in with my understanding of the master plan.
Looks like fourteen lots total?
Again, the number's still open to discussion, but one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
One of the five right is one or two. It might just be a topo line.
That's one. Yes, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Ten, okay. Anyone else have any other questions?
So does this, this does not change? Does it? They have permission for a certain number of units?
Right.
In a certain phase, so what they're doing is moving them, so they're moving them or adding, is this all, where is the phase that's approved? I mean, is the phase that's approved, it will involve the green and all the white?
It's my, so it's my understanding that the phases were approved as individual subdivisions, right? So an application for a subdivision went in, and that subdivision just happened to be labeled phase one or phase two or whatever. So you could consider this as another phase if you want, but it really falls within several of the other phases, but from a master plan perspective, it's still under that umbrella.
I mean, that's my question, is the phase that was approved, does that take this, the blue, all the blue into consideration?
Well, I mean, I guess, so the green and the white, those are already approved. And then this, these blue lots are part of a big chunk of land, or two, chunked out of the big, big piece of land, I mean, say the masterpiece of lands.
So, so was there supposed to be a certain amount of green space, or was there supposed to be?
There is a certain amount of dedicated open space, but we've done, the research we've done so far, and we're, again, we're going to make sure, before we come in with a full application, but we don't see anything constraining these lots right now from a spatial standpoint.
I mean, I believe the number of units is based on fifteen thousand square feet per unit. And then, you know, some of the lots, those five lots are much smaller, some of those are only nine or ten thousand.
We have a lot that are bigger, right, that are currently there.
Some are biggest, I mean, overall, so on average, every unit over there is going to have fifteen thousand square feet allocated, whether it's going to be his green space.
But how does this fit into, so like you said, some of the lots that are there are smaller, there's some that are quite a bit bigger, right?
Yeah.
So how does that change that whole allocation? Does this, does it have to go back, does it have to go back and be re-looked at, you know, the numbers of how that changes it, or it, it just fits within the phase?
Well, I mean, I guess some of the units, you know, condo building, you know, there's, you can have ten condos, and those that have fifteen thousand square feet of land allocated out of the total parcel for each condo, but they're going to be clustered together and the green space will be elsewhere.
Right, and when we were talking about water and sewer and all that, it was, you know, because of all the, the square footage changes and the bathroom changes of the water used to change because they were bigger, that changed one of the formulas of, of how, what, what the total was. So does this, I have problems putting them in, I just want to make sure that they fit within the original design for the phase, because
I mean.
If there wasn't a certain amount of green space, or if there, if some of the houses over there, they're built now are bigger than what was supposed to be there, that changes some of the total square footage that was available, is that right, to say?
Right.
So, so then you add the blue ones on, and then how does that change the total wall of that? Without having all that.
I mean, that's something we'll have to make.
Well, and I think we'll, we'll suggest a way to handle that, to keep, yeah, exactly. So we'll, we'll give you guys a proposed table, accounting table on how we're going to track all that. Because again, you know, it's going to be a little painful, the first one, right? Because we, it's been a little while since anything happens, the first pass for Mark and the new team here to, to work with you guys on this project. So, you know, we're going to, we'll have some discussions on this first one to get into the groove, but it should, once we figure out, you know, get everybody on the same page with how we're going to do the accounting here, it should go pretty, pretty smoothly from there.
I don't understand what happens at the end.
Well, at the end, you're out of room.
It's one of those take from Peter to pay Paul thing, and you know, Peter gets sore.
Eventually, I mean, eventually the project gets built out and, and Mark is done. I mean, I think in Mark's perspective, if he can do that really quickly, great, you know, because he's, you know, he's going to be developing it out and getting done with his, his part of this. But that's, ultimately, there is, there isn't, there is an end here, there is a cap for how much density that, that property can, can, can hold. But we're changing that. No, we're not changing the overall number.
Density will be the same.
So at the end, the last phase won't have as many, is that what? It's going to run out somewhere.
Well, I mean. So eleven hundred eighteen units total?
Yeah, I think so.
No matter what. Well, it was eleven hundred eighteen, given the certain square footage requirements, but that was my question, the square footage requirements have been increased.
For the houses, or you're talking about for the land? When you say square footed.
The houses.
Okay.
Because it was eleven hundred eighteen units, given the basis of design of the square footage requirement, so some of that has changed, or some of the houses were built bigger or smaller. However, that, you know, affected it, but to me, it's going to be some sort of a, like you said, a table or a chart or something that you'd be able to say, here's the eleven hundred eighteen with the square footage that was originally approved. Here's what we, here's what's built today.
Yeah.
Here's what we want to add, but without seeing any, it's kind of hard to.
Well, again, you know, tonight, just to now knowing, now I know what we got, what we got to present to you guys, you know, to, 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 you know, to clarify this and make sure that we're addressing this. I mean, you know, and the challenge always with master plan development work is that, you know, this master plan was approved, what, two recessions in a pandemic ago, right? So, you know, it's a little bit difficult to have your crystal ball that shined that clean to understand what's going to happen in the future. So there's always some, you know, some, some push and pull and discussion that has to take place to make sure everything squares up. Overall, from what I've seen, and again, I've been involved a bunch of master plan work, this one seems like it's gone pretty well, it's been fairly consistent with what was contemplated way back when the master plan was approved. So, and everything that we've been talking about on our end suggests that moving forward, we're going to be right there as well. So, but again, understood that we've got, it's on us to come to you guys with, hey, here's how we want to do the accounting, here's how we'd like to keep track of everything, here's how the density is impacted. And then let, use the board, review it, take, nod your head yes or no, we'd like to change this, and we can come to an agreement on how to handle that.
I think that, because this is a planned phase developer, I think that the master plan really relates to that. So every phase is not only somewhat detailed about what it is, it also shows, shows how each additional phase affects it. And it allows the town to have orderly buildings, so they know what's coming online. But, you know, so if we're just piecemeal in this thing, it really doesn't give the town picture of, it gives a picture of what they want now, but it really doesn't show how it's going to affect the future.
Well, that was done.
Needs to be right off, I mean, it, it certainly, that's the part of a planned phase development in a master plan.
But that was done, right, to my, my viewpoint is, that was, when the town approved this master plan, and approved this development, they're saying, okay, we've got the infrastructure with the conditions that were buried in there about the tank and all this other stuff, but basically, the town committed to say, look, we're approving this. So we, we're saying that we can, can allow this to be built, and that was the agreement, everybody shook hands and everybody agreed on that. So now, the absorption. Now, the absorption rate of that, you know, now obviously there is some time, you know, there's a lag here, we're coming with subdivisions. You know, and and, you know, like this presentation. So now, you know, you, there is gonna be some time, but I, and I will review. The master plan agreement to understand how the phasing was laid out. I don't have a full understanding of that yet, but. I guess I don't know if there's really a mechanism necessary to delve any deeper into the phasing. As this, we're just coming in with subdivisions, we're coming in with proposed projects that are fitting under that master plan umbrella.
I think some people have expressed concerns, houses are significantly larger.
Yeah, understood.
And, you know, so you're using more resources than you than what you bargained in.
Uh uh, we hear that message. So that's something we're gonna talk, we'll talk internally on our team and come back with with how we're gonna present that.
You discussed the last meeting with.
What's that?
You discussed that the last meeting, if I remember right.
Yeah.
Well, and then. When this overall. When this master plan or this development was originally approved. It had the input of all of the, all of the abutters. So he's each but, any abutter could take a look at any phase of the project, what it was gonna be. So, I mean, doing this.
Well, these, this is all the abutters are gonna be noticed.
Right.
Yeah.
Doing this probably.
Yeah.
It might stir up small stuff.
It may, it may, you know, but but again, it's gonna be like any other subdivision that goes across town. All the abutters are gonna be noticed. It's gonna be publicly noticed. So everybody will have an opportunity to 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 view and comment on it.
I mean, the only downside I see to it is that if if there was. Supposed to be green space and and you disaffected it, that would be one thing that would think that you gotta look into. And the other thing would be the. Water and sewer and capacities. I don't know how that gets affected because the town now has things where it has to be studied if you're coming, more things are coming on. So does that change any of the things because of? What's been done to other businesses or, you know? So.
When they come in for subdivision, we can take a look at that.
Well, no, but they may, right, they may want to. They may wanna talk to the town and say.
Obviously, in our.
Is this gonna affect, is this gonna affect us as far as having to do a water and sewer study because? We're doing this because the town has made others do water and sewer studies. Will this be made to do that? I don't know. Just one of the questions.
I I mean, where we're gonna try to go, and it may take a little, I'll get there, but ideally, when we come in with an application, we're hoping most of the heavy lifting has been done. We've shaken out all the bugs, we're giving you guys all the information you need to make it easy review and make it clear, and then let the public comment, let the abutters comment, but not. You know, try to be as complete and thorough as we can with the application. So that way it makes basically everybody's job a little easier. That's the plan.
I think Brian had a question.
Yeah, um, how does this affect your operation during permit?
So this is all within that existing. Approved area. So it's, that's covered under that.
Increasing the density within that zone, so it's gonna affect the stormwater runoff.
From what I, I will review the AOT to make sure it complies.
That's all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we gotta make sure that that stormwater.
You get blindsided.
Understood. Good question, very good question. So just wanna make sure that we, that the amount of impervious that was assumed in that previous AOT is still covered here. Push comes to shove, we can always amend that, but but from what I understood at a first pass, we were okay, but we'll we'll confirm.
Yeah, for so many units.
Okay. Yeah, I had three things. First, a comment on the green space calculation. Um, I would think that'd be kind of on you to come up and say, okay.
Yep.
You know, with the condos and the lots and all that that have already been approved, we need X amount of. Uh, public, you know, green space to support that. Then after taking away these lots out of the current green space, do you still have enough?
Right.
That to me is a calculation that you'll provide. It seems to me just looking at it like there is, but I.
No, that's a calculation we have to give you guys, yeah.
Um, my second thing is actually just basically what Ron just said, that that, um, you know, I, you will need to make sure that. None of these lots um affect the stormwater runoff plan, because I know the swells on the sides of the road and. Uh places to absorb and uh, you know, runoff, heavy runoff, that that it doesn't affect any elements of the stormwater. Runoff of especially as approved in the AOT.
Yep.
Um. And then my my last comment is, it looks like if if the dark, dark blue is. Water or streams. It looks like. That lot.
Okay, so.
Is a problem.
That lot is wet, but we've looked at it and we believe there's a, there's a viable building footprint there. It's gonna be a small home, but we believe that there is a viable footprint there. Again, we'll have to show that to you guys. We're gonna have to demonstrate to you. That all these lots are buildable. So that's part of the application.
Okay. And then as far as, you know, the water and sewer. Again, that was already done in two thousand and six, was that we have, and we've confirmed that at least twice now, that we have enough.
Yep.
Water and sewer capacity and and one of your predecessors.
That's right, to do that.
Built a.
It was part of the, you're right, part of the agreement, developer agreement.
Sewer line underneath the.
Yep.
Bridge of the river, I don't know where it is, but crosses the river.
Yep, yep.
Um, so that, that, that's already been done.
But again, go go back to Jimmy's comment, or my comment, that some of the house lots are bigger, which has changed some of the. Demands on where where it was. So I don't know how that affects. That's where I was coming from.
Well, the the. calculation of water use in the master plan was was based on. Single homes, hotel rooms, and condos with a cumulative. Um, number of bedrooms and number of. Uh. Typical, typical gallons per day. Gowns per day is based on bedrooms, not not right bathrooms.
Right, right.
So so it was all based on that. So whatever, there's X number of. Gallons per day that was part of the calculation based on the master plan. Now, obviously, they've changed the master plan because they took condos and changed them into single-family lots.
Right.
That water allocation doesn't go away because now there's only. Whatever, fifteen bedrooms instead of fifty bedrooms. It doesn't go away. It's, it's in the pot.
Right.
In the same way that the the um three bedrooms. That's now a eight-bedroom home, that those extra bedrooms come out of the pot. And at the end of the whole development. That pot should be. Net zero.
Right.
At the least.
Right.
You know, they may decide that, you know, there's extra bedrooms in there, but they're not gonna build. More, but I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I look at it. Kind of, when you're grouping it into the pot thinking, well, so now all these blue ones are coming out of the pot. That's already been, whatever that pot number is. Total, but in the last phase, there's gonna be not a lot of building. There may not be a lot of. Those units in that last phase will be. Scarcer than, there'll be less than there would be was originally because of the. Increase in what's already been built and adding extra lots here. So how does, again, the question is, how does that affect the? Phasing and the master plan and so when you get to the third.
It it it's up to them. They have a pot. When it runs dry, it runs dry.
I think we're ways away from that.
Well, they can come back and say, hey, we'd like to increase our.
Green space.
Well, we'd like to have more units on that.
Right.
We would, we would want an increase in the pot.
You need a bigger pot then, yeah, yeah.
Planning board of that century, you know, decade.
Who knows, right?
If it moves real fast, it could be next year.
Could be.
On the other hand, what if they come in and say, okay, we only wanna do one more thing. We wanna build a huge hotel of nine hundred rooms and all one bedroom.
Right.
And if that's all they wanna do. That might, you know.
Well.
Dry up the pot because of all just one bedroom unit. I mean.
Yeah, I don't know. It changes, it it just changes the.
Yeah, I mean, again.
Plan is there, and unless they come in and try to change that, which. I I. Don't think they're going to, and certainly at this point wouldn't make any sense.
Right.
Um, that's, they have a limit. You know, but again, I don't see this as any different than if they took some piece of land over here and said, we're gonna build whatever that is, twelve lots.
Yeah.
Well, Mark had said he wants to keep smaller lots, so that probably. Brings it more towards the performance of the master plan and the basis of design. Should that change, so.
So so what I think, what I'm, what I'm hearing is when we come in with the application, we're gonna make sure that we're gonna propose. Here's our accounting for the unit count and the open space, and here's our accounting for the water allocation, and here's our accounting for the sewer allocation, how everything's gonna be tracked. Because like, like, you know, like you said. We're only taking the first couple of spoonfuls out of a big pot here with this, with this project. But why not get our act together now on how we're gonna account for this moving forward? So that way Mark can move aggressively as he needs to move with the market. And everybody's comfortable with how we're keeping, keeping sure the accounting going.
And I think as part of the accounting, we wanna include what's. You probably might wanna consider including what's been constructed that's bigger and or smaller, you know. Uh, as far as the the total accounting of it, because there's some that may be smaller and some that may be bigger. So when you're looking at making that total accounting and say. We were supposed to have X amount of lots this size or houses of this size. They're now, it's this many at the bigger size, is this many at the smaller size? And and so so we had to start off with, as you said, a fresh basis to go forward, you know?
Yep, that that's what we'll, we're gonna consider how best to do that. We'll, we'll think about it, and when we come with the application, we'll present that to you guys and like, hey, here's what we're thinking, and then we can all talk it through and get it to where you guys are happy with it.
Cool.
If I remember correctly, because if you increase the more. The more bad basements, we use more sewer, and the line coming across the river is a horse, has a grinder pump and a porch pressure pump.
Yep.
Going through, instead of big pipe and a small. It's why I make sure the smaller pipe and the grinder pump and pressure pump will be able to shore.
Handle that. Yep, yep. And then, yep.
I think you're putting a new vein onto the river, is that right?
I think so. Yeah, again, that'll be something we speak to with each development, because we'll have, we have an approved capacity with the approved equipment. And we'll, every time we come in with something, we're gonna, hey, here's what we gotta prove, here's how it fits, here's how it works.
Round up, push, push down the river by the pressure.
How about?
Hold on, Paul.
Two, two things. Ron's here. Does does adding extra lots affect any, any fire protection things? You know, insurance, that they have to have more hydrants. And the other thing is, does it affect any traffic? That might be there. Is that, is that a consideration? Because when you have, when you start having the abutters come in or stuff, they might be asking questions, you know? Just.
Always questions.
Just things in the past that have come up during. During stuff like this, people will ask about traffic.
Well, every subdivision, right? Every subdivision, you gotta answer the traffic question, you gotta answer the fire suppression question, you know, so it's, yeah, runoff question. I mean, that's, that's, that's part of your, that's part of the subdivision process.
Those are just things, yeah.
Okay. Anyone have anything else?
No, this has been very helpful. So I think we.
When we see you back here?
Um, I don't know. We'll have to see when. So what are the deadlines for subdivision applications?
Twenty-three days before the meeting?
Well, it doesn't really work out quite that way because um we're restricted by. For example, um, you know, looking uh, W R. Like if, if I, it's gonna be, I have to have those things by Friday. Um, and in order to show up on Wednesday. And um, that's been a paper um, two. It's like two weeks before the hearing, so. Have on here. So for example, I had to have the add to the paper on the fourth for the hearing on the twenty-third. So.
It's two and a half weeks.
Two and a half weeks.
Okay.
I need several days.
You need several days to.
Together, do all the other notices and all that, so.
So, okay, so if we figure, at the very, at the very least, it's gonna be. Three weeks and a couple of days, let's say, um, but figure four weeks.
Are you planning on? Developing these blue lots this year? Any of these blue lots this year, that you're structuring on?
I believe that would be the intent, yeah.
Because you.
So you're gonna build spec houses on them?
I I'm not sure. I don't know.
No, I understand. I mean, the reason I'm asking is because it's the timing. By the time you get, you have your hearing.
Yeah.
Then you do your application, and then that goes through the. Process. It could be, it could be a lot.
Yeah, it'd be A P approval on that change and stuff that.
Uh, I don't know. I don't know if you'd have to go before A P. It all depends on how the original thing was laid out, so. But I mean, I understood it's a process. We, we, we know the process, we know the timeline, so it's probably gonna be a couple of meetings with you guys, you know, it's usually what it takes.
Yeah.
Um, you know, your engineer will probably have to review it, so certainly gonna take some time. We gotta get it teed up at some point, so. Um, you know, but I think the intent is, yeah, to try to be, to have some, some houses going in the ground this year, um, if we can, if we can make it happen.
These can be standalone houses, correct, lots?
Yes.
Probably all?
Yeah, these be standalone.
Each one gives you fifteen thousand square feet then. And we say nine.
These were nine, the ones in twenty fourteen, because they just took. Took five lots off, the five units off they count.
It's a nine thousand.
These are all fifteen or bigger, these lots.
So this one, when Jimmy did that.
Yep. Yep.
All right. That was good. All right.
All right, awesome. Well, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
So we'll, we'll see what we can do to get an application in.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Rick, I'm gonna need you to get his hand raised.
Yeah, Rick.
Can you folk? Can you folks hear me now?
Yeah, we can.
Tell us why you're here.
Uh, I I was asked to try to explain to you folks. When when an intent to cut is required and why it's required. And I I did send. The applicable RSA and and REV rule. I don't know if you have those in front of you, but it's RSA seventy-nine, one. Roman numeral two B five. And I can read that to you if you don't have it, but do do you have it anywhere in your paperwork?
I don't, I don't think so. Did you email that today?
I I did.
Okay, I have to kind of know, um, because I didn't.
That's okay. Uh, I'll read it. It's it's short. Uh, the the following persons shall not be required to file an intent to cut or be subject to the tax imposed by this chapter. And number five is, is a person who cuts or causes to be cut within the tax year. Up to ten thousand board feet of logs and twenty cords of wood or the equivalent in whole tree chips, which is one hundred tons. From the person's own land within a municipality for land conversion purposes other than timber growing and forest uses. Provided that those persons intending to convert the use of the land. Have secured all required local permits, including but not limited to. Building permits, subdivision and zoning permits, excavation permits, or site plan approvals. As necessary for the use to which the land will be converted and are able to furnish proof of such permits. So in other words, if 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 they're gonna cut under ten thousand and twenty cords or under one hundred tons. Basically, three truckloads of wood for the purposes of land conversion, and they have their local permits in place, an intent to cut is not required. What the REV rule thirty-four oh seven point one, it defines it a bit further. And says that owners exempted under seventy-nine, one, two, B, five. Shall complete and file Form PA seven, which is the intent to cut and pay yield tax on all wood and timber cut if the volume exceeds. Ten thousand board feet and twenty cords or one hundred tons of chips. So if their local permits are in place, they stay under the volumes, no intent is necessary. If they don't have any of the local permits in place, an intent to cut is required. And if they're going to exceed those volumes, an intent to cut is required.
So if every municipality has different permit requirements.
Correct.
Okay. So I mean, if the town, if a town doesn't wanna give a permit, is willing to wait till the law is cut to give a permit, there's nothing wrong with that.
No, it's not. Not, not, not as far as RSA seventy-nine is required, because.
Right.
If that permit is going to be required for the converted use at some point. That permit needs to be in place before the cutting takes place or the intent to cut is required.
Okay, so I think, um, I, just to be clear, so, um, you know, we have, we had somebody who wanted to, um, he's gonna develop. Uh, some lots. And, you know, within the year. Uh, but he's decided to clear the lots first, either to market them. Um, in advance of, you know, building a spec house or. So how does that fall within your guideline? Um, so say, say in February, they they clear the lot. And they come in for their application for a land use permit from us um in April. So. Is that perfectly acceptable, even though they don't have a permit? So is that perfectly acceptable, even though they don't have a permit from us, they? You know, they're not coming in until April to get a land use permit?
Have have they already had a subdivision approval prior to this?
Yeah, I mean, year two thousand six.
Okay.
But they but they, you know, they were gonna, in this particular case, they were gonna. Merge three lots, but they wanted to clear the lots, all three lots first. And then come in for a. Request for an application for, I mean, bring in an application for a land use permit, so.
It it sounds like they should have the intent to cut.
Right. Well, how much, you know, we're talking about third of an acre lots. I mean, how much, how much timber do you get off one of those lots to clear for a single family home?
If if you have a one-third acre lot.
Hold on, yeah.
It 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 could vary from property to property. You you might cut four truckloads of wood on an acre, a a an acre across the road. You might be lucky to get a half a truckload of wood.
But could you, could you get three truckloads of wood from that one-third of an acre? Is that possible?
It would be tough. It it would be tough.
There's about thirty cords of wood per acre, I'm not correct. You're correct, I'm wrong, the average numbers.
That's that's pretty close, yeah.
So so a person really only needs an intent to cut. Because if they have a lot and they they don't know what they want to put on it, but they want to cut it. All they really need is the intent to cut and the intent to cut will tell them what they what they can and can't do on it. Whether they, how much wood they can harvest, stuff like that.
Plus with intent to cut, you can't even put it dry, you can't even put cover it in temporarily.
So I mean, you know, truly the intent to cut is all you really need, I would think, to be able to do.
Well, if they're gonna take on more than ten thousand board feet.
Right.
No, I think I think they were advised that they could just cut.
Three separate lots at the time.
They didn't think they needed an intent to cut because they were gonna develop the lot. I think that was the advice that they got from us.
Okay, consider it this way. The the way the law reads is that all timber in the state of New Hampshire. Requires an intent to cut and it's taxable unless the owner qualifies for an exemption. And in terms of land conversion exemption, that's that's the exemption that I just read to you seventy nine, nine, one, Roman numeral two, B, five. And thirty four oh seven, one.
Who gives, who gives the exception?
Nobody gives it. If if the owner qualifies for it, they get it. It's not, it's not given or granted.
So, okay, so it's so it's on the owner's word that.
I mean, it's basically self-certify is what you're saying.
So, yes, it's on, it's on the owner and the logger, but if 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 I show up at one of the. Operations and I see a harvest going on and it's it's clear that they've moved five truckloads of wood and they're gonna build a house there. And I ask him if they have an intent and they say no. Depending on who the logger is and what his history is. They may get a verbal or written warning, or they may get a summons and a fine, depending if, you know, if this is the first time or the fourth time or. You know, is this a repeat offender or is it someone who who really just doesn't understand the law and just? Just needs a warning and they come into the town and file their intent after the fact.
So, so Rick, is is it the responsibility of, as well as the owner, I would assume, but? The logger's responsibility as well?
Yes, the responsibility falls on both of them, both the owner and the logger.
Right, but the logger should have more of the responsibility because they are the people who know how much wood can be harvested, what kind of wood they're gonna get on there. So you would think it would be up to the logger, who's ever gonna develop that and cut that to self. Take a look at themselves and see if they fit within that requirement. Is that correct?
Yes, as far as estimating the volumes, we, that responsibility should fall to the logger. Where where we typically have problems is. An owner will hire the logger, the logger says, okay, you're under ten and twenty, you're under a hundred tons. Do you have your local permits? And the owner says, yes, you're all set, go. When when in reality, he had nothing. And 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 then now it falls back on the logger and the logger's in trouble because he listened to the landowner and he really shouldn't have.
So 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 you said he has his local permit. What what do you mean by that?
Well, let's 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 consider the different uses that that would qualify for land conversion. A house lot, a building lot. The the very least, all towns in the state require a building permit.
True. Well, we have, we, we do a land use permit, which is a zoning permit, because we didn't adopt that RSA. To locally enforce the state building code, so we're not allowed to issue building permits. We can only issue land use permits.
Okay, so you have a land use permit.
You're also kind of any kind of land use permit as well.
What?
We'll keep it with Lincoln, so we can see.
Okay, let's keep the link.
You 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 most likely are going to need a driveway permit if there's not currently a driveway in place.
Right, and I give those too, I give those also.
Well, you don't need a driveway permit if it's a approved development.
Yeah, you do.
That's right, that's right. Some towns require a septic system design and a septic.
If it's if it's South Peak, for example, and then there's a house lot and they're gonna cut it. That's going on to a private road. They don't need a driveway permit from a town, do they?
No, no, they would not.
Yeah, because the fire truck and the emergency vehicles have to be able to get up there. And that is why we require a driveway permit in order to access that lot.
I'd have to see that. I I don't think. Huh? Yeah, I think it's on town roads. I don't think it has private roads. I don't know.
Well, it's your, it's your people who have to go and respond.
Well, I I understand, but when they, when the when the development is approved, the roads are looked at. And at that time, the fire chief says, I can get my truck around all these roads. Okay. But when you build a house lot on that road, I don't think you need a driveway permit if it's a private road, if that house lot is coming off.
We're getting up subject here.
No, I'm just checking because we were talking about permits. That's why we got up on all this stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, I just have a question, like in this example, we're talking about three separate lots. Does that ten thousand wood feet limit get triggered by each lot or in cumulative?
The the exemption is per owner, per municipality, per year. So if the same entity owns each of those three lots, it would be the. Total volume combined. They couldn't claim that exemption for each lot. They could claim it once per town per year.
Okay, but if it was three lots in three different towns, he wouldn't, he wouldn't have to worry.
That's right. And if it was three different ownership entities, they they each one of them could get the exemption as well.
Do you go with the, you like staying in the way out?
All right. Rick, is there anything else you would like to tell us?
That's that's all I've got. Do you have any other questions?
Also, if you have a question on the amount of timber taken off, all you town has to do is contact county forester. Usually he makes a point coming up and you measure the timber, am I correct?
Possibly, but. Because the forest is pretty busy. That's that's not typically what they do. Go around and measure the timber on house lots for people.
Because if I remember right, it says you're in the state federal law, you have a big timber lot. You contact the state, the county forester, you go in, you unbox the trees for you to cut, take out, at no charge, if you're proving the lot. At which time you don't get a timber tax on it because you're proving the lot, large lot, for logging. But at the same token, when you're done logging, you can turn around and say the whole thing. It's a quirk in the law. I remember right, the law has been changed in the last thirty years.
So is Rick saying that?
It sounds like your answers. Go ahead.
Is Rick saying that you have to have a? Well, obviously, you need an intent to cut if you go over these both, these parameters.
Right.
If you don't go with the parameters, you don't need an intent to cut. And it's self. Checked. And. The logger and the owner are responsible for making sure that they stay underneath that, so they don't have to do that. But if you go over those requirements, you not only need an intent to cut, but you need a. The permit from the town as well to start. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, not quite. In 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 order to qualify for the exemption and not need the intent, you need to have the local permits.
Unless you go.
Correct. If you go over the ten thousand and twenty, it doesn't matter whether you have the permits or not. You're not exempt if you go over the volume.
But I I guess. I think the question, you know, is basically. If the town chooses to allow people to clear their locks without a permit, that's that's out prerogative. Is that correct?
You certainly can. And if if you allow them to do that, then they 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 need the intent to cut.
Right, I mean, that's, yeah, but it's on the homeowner and the forester.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
From the audience, isn't it kind of difficult to, from the small scale house lot, to to do the clearing before you do the surveying and all the layout and I mean. Before there's any permits issued at all? Isn't that kind of common?
Not always.
Wait, no, not always, but I mean. If that's the case, then there wouldn't really be a permit issued to clear like, you know, half an acre or something on a building lot.
Which which you need for the record, by the way.
I'm sorry, that press me.
Rick, did you hear that?
I I heard most of it. That's gonna vary from town to town. If if you know what your. Converted use is gonna be, if you're clearing a half acre with the intention of building a house. And you know that you're gonna need a building permit or a driveway permit at some time, you need to have them in place if you want to qualify for the exemption.
Who's the intent to cut issuing authority or the approval authority?
The municipality.
Is that the board of select, be the board of selectmen?
The assessing officials, yeah. Yep, board of selectmen.
Only town manager.
Okay, okay, so in in the case that we were talking about with the three merged lots. So.
But he didn't hadn't merged them at the time.
Yeah, he hasn't, he he has an intent to merge and actually I have an application for a merger.
Same owner.
Same owner.
Right.
It'll be next week or two weeks from now when you get to do it. But anyway, so he cleared all three lots. And he said, and he felt he was exempt from. The requirement of the intent to cut because he was going to develop it, you know, later on in the year. So how should that have worked? He should.
He 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 should have had the intent to cut. It it depends on the volume. If if he was under those. Volume limits, he should have at least had his land use permit in place first to qualify for the exemption. If he was over those volume limits, it wouldn't have mattered what permits he had in place. He needed an intent to cut.
Okay.
So if you're under, you need a land use permit before you cut. Or if you're gonna go over.
Again, there's no, there's no requirement that town give a permit before you clear a lot.
Right. I mean, sometimes you don't know what you're gonna put on the lot. You don't know how much you're gonna cut. I mean, you know, you cut it and then you change, you change your design, you change your. You know, you might change your driveway entrance, you might change anything. So to me, it it would be.
Anyone have anything else?
I got a question. If you're paying top dollar on your taxes for a piece of property. How come the state charges you a double tax on it, so like a double standard? If you already own the property, paying taxes and land and one percent every year to the town. And you're not under, you're not under current use.
Well, first of all, the state doesn't charge a tax on anything. It's a municipal tax. And secondly, since nineteen forty-two, timber has been removed from the general property tax bill. The value of the timber is only taxed once. And that's ten percent of the stumpage value when you cut it. Prior to nineteen forty, prior to nineteen forty-two. The value of your timber was rolled into your property tax assessment and you were taxed on your timber value every single year. It doesn't take a genius to figure out what the large timber owners were doing. They were doing liquidation cuts. If the timber wasn't there, they couldn't be taxed on it. And that's why the law was changed in nineteen forty-two to remove timber from the annual property tax bill.
I have one last question though. Who determines the value of the timber being cut?
The assessing officials in the municipality. The the assessing officials in the municipality.
But I don't think anybody used me down, but either work with the town as the inkling when timber's worth. I've cleared land in the lots before, and the land, all the timber taken off is only worth a hundred dollars. Actually, the school land before, the timber is worth up to a thousand dollars.
Who's the assessing official in Lincoln? I don't even.
That's the point of trying right now.
Do you have a board of selectmen?
Oh, you, the board of selectmen are the assessing officials?
Correct.
Yes.
Who would make that, so you would do that.
Is is there a minimum amount of timber that you have to pay a tax? I mean, like Joe said, if it's worth a hundred dollars, you have to pay a tax, ten dollars, I mean.
No, like 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 I stated before, all timber in the state. Is taxable unless it qualifies for one of the exemptions.
Okay, so.
So like, for example, in Pittsburgh, there are people that, you know, they might cut one load of spruce, five thousand board feet. They file an intent to cut and they pay the timber tax on it.
Okay.
I made, yeah.
Rick.
Yeah.
I I own. In New Hampshire, I own in Littleton, in twenty two thousand and eight. We had hired the timber to harvest all the trees. It was more than eight, nine acres. He had paid me a chunk of money, but. I I'm not in that business, so I have no clue. Now, town of Littleton came back and saying there was a timber tax that I was to pay. Is it very between town to town versus state?
Each each town assesses the value of the timber and twice a year. We at the Department of Revenue provide the towns with the average stumpage ranges that are being paid to owners throughout the state and. And those stumpage ranges are generated from stumpage surveys. That that we send out twice a year to landowners, foresters and loggers to to. Try to determine what the stumpage ranges are that that are being paid for all the products in the state. So, you know, your your tax in Littleton or your assessed value in Littleton. Might have been very different from Conway or Keene or. Unity, depending on what part of the state you're in, because the stumpage value is very differently for. Different species in the northern, central and southern part of the state.
But if it's governed by the state, and then why the town was interactive with me to say, no. You owe nine thousand eight hundred some tax, that because your timber tax you did not pay. Which I paid, but I am in a situation right now that I have a permit. In in town of Lincoln, doing a commercial dilopment, I have a permit from the site. From the town, and now I'm doing a building permit from the state. Now I have a six acres. We be clean, cleaning up about four acres lot. As a owner, I'm not into the timber business. So how would I, how would I not to get penalized from you or from the town? So I go to the logger. That's what I've been doing from last couple of weeks, trying to see who is interested taking all the wood tree up there. So a a as a diloper, what I supposed to be doing, calling Rick or calling somebody to get some more guidance? How would I be doing this?
You 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 can certainly call us at D R A. We'll provide you with the average, the most recent average stumpage value list. You can look at that and 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 when the logger gives you a quote as to what they'll pay you, you can. You can compare it to that list and see if you're being treated fairly. You could certainly hire the services of a licensed forester who would be looking out for your best interest. Those are a couple of options.
I see. So as the owner, I had to pull the permit or timber guy will pull the permit?
It's it's, both of you have to, there there are places on the intent to cut that both of you have to sign, so it's. You know, the responsibility falls on both of you, both you and the logger.
It did all of the loggers that I've been calling from last couple of weeks, nobody mentioned anything about new regulations or anything.
This is not, it's not a new regulation. This has been in place for seventy-five years.
I I got that, but that means when I was. I signed a contract in Littleton, this law was was willable for everybody, which I have absolutely no clue. That's how I got trapped and there.
All right, let's let's move on here. You have one more question, Joe?
You can also contact county foresters, you give you all the credit base you want. Sometimes you look at that lot for your for feet. Tell you how much value it is in the product before you even cut it. Or timber specialists. The timber now says the whole lot, we even kind of stick, they measure each tree, how much each log is worth. And it says value will be, usually remember right, the tax on a thousand, uh, ten thousand dollars is a thousand dollars, ten percent. So that's what I've been chatting to the town.
Thank you.
Rick, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night.
Conceptual number two, Thaddeus Thad Presby, President of Presby Construction, eight forty-four Main Street, Franconia, New Hampshire, zero three five eight oh. Purchased a vacant lot with an off-premise sign known as Main Street. The deed land only, map one one eight, lot two, five point four three acres, Wesley Finch E B A, the Finch Group. T F G Lincoln Properties LLC, care of the Finch Group, sixty-one eleven Broken Sound Parkway Northwest, number one fifty, Boca Raton, Florida. Three three four eight seven dash two seven seven four, purchaser purchaser would like to know, would like to subdivide one lot into three lots for development. Not sure for what yet.
Okay, just before he starts, I just wanna let you know that I I did take your survey and give a copy of it to them. Um, but you're still in the, even though it's a survey, he's still in the in the conceptual stage. So it's not like the survey, it's a firm thing that he's done. Um, and so normally I don't give them that at all, so I just wanted to let everybody know that's why they have it.
That's fine, yeah, it was just the first step, so. So. Does everybody have a copy of the survey? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, so I guess these are a little bit muted, but so. So that's our general thought is is, um, that I think the the lot is one lot spanning both sides are Cooper Memorial. And the, so with the one side, we like to, once the the side we're not subdividing, I I have under contract. So I I just, I don't know what's gonna happen over there, so we're we're kind of ignoring that.
Okay.
But either way, I have to get it split off, you know, that side of the road has to come off. Um, and then the 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 two lot side, we're gonna keep, my brother and I, and.
If I'm looking the ones to the right, I want you keeping.
Uh, um, yeah, it's just, uh, yes, correct, yeah, the city or the smaller ones, yep.
The smaller ones?
Yes, yes, sir. Yeah, the ones that look like more of the triangle, the point of the triangle, so to speak.
What is this orange lot here?
Uh, I don't know why that was carved out that way, that's that's part of the lot, that was off an old survey plan.
I can't, can't make out what this is saying here, is Carol pointing to this right away here.
It says town right away.
That's the old, well, that's the old road. That's old, I think that's old Cooper Memorial Drive that got moved. Well, I went through this with my attorneys, there's all these, all this whole property when it was developed, has all these cross right of way easements. Like, even the hotel next door has a parking lot that would, that is on my land right now.
Right.
But they have the right to do that, just like I have the right to do certain things on their land, it's a very odd situation. Um, and I can't say that I understand every bit of it, but I went through it with all my attorneys, you're like, no, that's all good, it's just the way it is. So it's. Excuse me?
That was done with T and B originally, but it's thirty-five, thirty years ago.
It's been a long time, one of the attorneys, the older one's in the office, was part of that whole deal, so he looked at it all, he's like, no, that's all you can use. Cause I thought that was pretty odd to have a parking lot on the other lot, but apparently it's not.
So Cooper Memorial, that's basically an easement over your land?
Correct.
Okay.
And I assume that's private road, right?
Cooper Memorial is right on your lot line, looks like.
Well, right, it's it's we, it splits both sides, we on both sides, right now, we on both sides of that of that green area.
Right, I think that line is one of your proposed lot lines.
Yeah, one one lot has to, some of the lot has to own the road, right, has to, so that we're gonna go right down, exactly, right down the the west side of it with the lot line.
Can I give you a bit of information?
Absolutely.
Stay right now with that while your group got one twelve.
Yeah, I've had, well, so that's another thing we chat about, but so, I've had, I I do a lot of D O T permits, so I'm pretty, I talk to Jim McMahon and the crew up there all the time, so.
When they put the trailer in, there's a lot, I mean, opposite, there's a lot on the east of the side of the Cooper Memorial.
There's a little office trailer there, yeah.
Seventy feet from one twelve, where you can make a road to go into it.
Mm-hmm.
Couldn't just come out of the street and go into it. I'm not trying to dissuade you, I was trying to tell you what I know of the lots and the troubles we had with it.
Absolutely, I know, I know that any potential access off one twelve would be, would be a struggle. We've, I've had that conversation with Jim McMahon, and he's, you know, I don't know if you have this, you have this plan too, right? So, yeah, so obviously the green, you know, so I guess my questions are a couple of things, once I left. I think it seems like the minimum lot size is like fifteen thousand square feet, so anything we do is gonna be well above that. Cause the east side that we're keeping is like two and a half acres. So if we split it in roughly half, I mean, even, it's gonna be an acre at least. That makes sense. So.
That orange line shows up here too, I would.
It's on, it's on this old survey too.
Okay.
It's on an old survey that I got, that I had, I brought this paperwork. For some reason, this was, this was boxed out at one time, and I don't know why, it was just off the survey that I got. No, it's this whole orange line that someone put around this lot, that's the old road.
Line, yeah.
This line, yeah, that's the old road, and I don't know why someone drew it on there, it was on a map that got carried over.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry.
If Moon didn't have the right, didn't have the right right now, they have the right way for the memorial lot.
There's certainly a lot of old baggage.
Yeah.
There's certainly a lot of old baggage on these lots, it was pretty odd.
They had to move it before it was, this one over here, over.
Yeah.
For that purpose. So they did agree with T and B to come back, pick the cut shot.
So, I mean, it seems fairly straightforward for subdivision, except, I'm assuming I can, we can use the private road as road frontage. Right, we don't, and we have plenty of road frontage one way or the other for all this. So.
Yeah.
Well, how do you access the lots that, the smaller lot?
Well, that's that's the, so that was part of my question, if if, because we don't necessarily know what the, let's say we're gonna create those two lots. The two lots over on the east side, but we don't really know what we're doing with them necessarily. D O T is not gonna, they don't give you a permit, you know, for the off, if I try to go off off one twelve, right? They won't even think about giving you a permit to tell them what you're gonna do with it, right, you can't even discuss it, cause they don't know the traffic count, they don't know any of it. So, since since we have plenty of road frontage on Cooper. Um, could we, can they be subdivided with, cause you, I mean, when I do stuff in the in Franconia Planning Board. We either have the D O T permit or the driveway permit with a subdivision, or we make it conditional, you know, the subdivision conditional on it. But I I, until someone knows what we're gonna do, like, I don't even know what this other person that I have, that wants this other half is gonna do. I I don't even know what they're doing with it, you know, it's, I'm not allowed to even say. Who knows, but I, but at the same time, I don't, no one's told me, but I don't know what, where they're gonna wanna come off the road, so I can't even, I can't even present.
I'm not allowed to say, so you must know.
Well, I know generally, but, yeah.
Five years ago, we had this problem, somebody wanted to pin up one twelve, we're acting the property.
Yeah.
And state said, after you got it, you know.
Yeah.
It is, it is certain, there's agreement with the state from down the pin, down to the town, all the way up past, uh, Lincoln Station. Only seventy crab cups are allowed, this was put in nineteen fifty-four, I believe.
Yeah.
Applied, you can find, go back and check it, they weren't allowing more crab cups.
Yeah, and then, and Jim and I talked about that, we even talked about the potential, he said, he said, we might talk about a one-way in. So like, we could come in and split those two lots that that we're trying to create on the east side, and and do it in and not and and out onto Cooper. So, I understand that the D O T is is gonna be a stretch, or 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 a no, no game, you know, I I know that. No, you're fine, I I get it, I'm, and I don't know, I don't have an answer for those things yet.
Does it exist in? Memorial, but come out of the fifteen thousand square feet when you're looking at the size of the lot? Because that can only be used for a road.
That would be fine, I I assumed it did, because I mean, we would, we're only creating two lots, they're way bigger than that anyway, so that even if we take that out, it wouldn't matter.
Fifteen thousand.
Oh, yeah, there's two and a half acres on that side of the road, including the Cooper Memorial.
That this piece right here is still bigger than fifteen thousand.
It it will be, I mean, cause if you take the the part of that Cooper Memorial and those two small lots, that's two and a half acres total. I didn't do the math, but it's way bigger than fifteen thousand per piece.
Question, I have this easternmost lot to be potentially land lots, so I don't know immediately if the board can create a lot with no access.
So, so we 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 don't have a problem if if that has to happen, if we have to come off Cooper on the corner, we would just come into the back of those two lots. And then, and then would we have to, could we do that as like a private right of way, or do we have to build like a town spec road to do that, you know, or?
I think private's fine.
Yeah, so if we left needed access to that lot, a short distance across the one lot to get to that.
Yeah.
Because what I'd like to kind of do is is regardless of what D O T might want in the future, or will let us do, we can argue with them later. As long as we, as long as we can get them subdivided and we have access off Cooper, one way or the other, right? It's, we shouldn't, it shouldn't be a huge issue, and if I wanna go back and and argue with them later and arm wrestle and try to come in off and do something different. And they say no, they say yes, whatever that is, then so be it.
When you commit for an access, you have to give line of sight.
Oh, yeah.
Curbages and safety cautious precautions.
Can you give, um, permission for for a balance Cooper to?
Do I need, I mean, I don't, I don't know, it's a private road, I mean, that's, I don't, can't imagine.
These people that have the rights, rights to Cooper Memorial, you have the right to have to take access to a lot from it.
Moon Mountain actually balked regularly, had the access to it, that's why they gave the access to South Peak Development. Cause Moon Mountain will have the right away for the road, so Moon Mountain is final stayover.
I didn't even think about that, so. So I'd have to chase that down and and give.
I wouldn't make that as a claim, you might, that might be your opinion.
I'll chase it down.
You need to look.
Yeah, absolutely, that's, that's a valid point.
Yeah.
Because your easement may, that the easement that was originally put over the property may or may not include. That the owner can also use that for access.
I'm assuming that we can use it, I will certainly check that, make sure we have some proof of that.
Right.
Depends on the order prior to that.
Yeah, so you got my questions answered here, so, I mean, from generally speaking, from a town standpoint, if we came for a subdivision. And we didn't even go talk to D O T, as long as we had access off Cooper, that would be okay, for not.
We're not giving you the okay.
Yeah, 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 but as long as we have road frontage somewhere, it doesn't have to be off, in laws, we have a way to get off the road. And if, because if it was only state, you'd probably want me to have that permit in hand, right?
You need road frontage.
Somewhere.
Somewhere.
Right, understood, okay.
Road frontage and access don't have to be the same thing.
Right.
You can have road frontage on route one twelve and access to a private drive in the back.
Right, sure, in this case, we have frontage on both one twelve and Cooper for both lots anyway, right? So we have options.
The second lot's not gonna have.
Right, right, we've, right, we're gonna put that, potentially put an access in the back, right, okay. Uh, well, I guess that was really my only question. I mean, we would meet, we would meet the minimum lot size, we would have some access.
What'd you say was confused one?
Um, I don't, well, I only know that I, I only know. All I actually, all I actually know about the lot that the other person wants is I know their last name. It doesn't, and I, and that's all I know, so that's what gives me the hint. Um, they weren't, and no one would tell us, actually, and the other two lots, undetermined at this point, my brother and I are just gonna keep them. And we have some general ideas, but we're not sure yet, everything's changing as usual.
Anything else?
Anything big jumping out at anybody, I mean, I I don't think it's. My brother, he's all right, he's a pain, no, he's good. That's all right.
I haven't seen him for ten years, but still.
My brother, you sure you're talking about my brother, Trevor, or you're talking about one of my uncles or my dad or something?
He used to be the playing boy too, one time, right going there.
Uh, that's me.
That's you?
My dad was selectman in Sugar Hill, maybe, I got Uncle Brad, I got Wayne, I got a. That's probably my dad, my uncle, yeah. So, yeah, that's all I got, I mean, it's really was about the access for the most part and the D O T stuff.
All right.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, appreciate it, I've been like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck, conceptual number three, trading, trading, clock trading post adding fence in areas, fair closure, map one or nine, lot seven.
Well, I wasn't sure a hundred percent, cause I was kind of looking at the maps, I wasn't sure if it was way up next to the house.
What I've got should explain that a little bit better.
The easel, just pass it around. What's easier for you guys?
Once. Sorry to hold you hostage.
Oh, that's all right, hey.
Yeah, so, uh, you may or may not know, last year, we we brought some new cups into the, into the fold there at the trading post. Because some of the bears are getting older, and so the family agreed that they needed to expand the existing, uh, pens that are across the street. From the main operation, and those pens are shown, like in this area of view. Here, here, and across the street, here's what we call the big house, you know, the Clark residence. And then, uh, you know, here's the fence and someone around those, those pens. But, uh, they don't have the capacity to add the the two new cups, uh, to them. So, it was decided to, uh, push out on this side, which is basically the north side of the existing pens. That's kind of ninety degrees to what this one is. Uh, and this is a sketch of what we wanna do, so we come off the existing fence. This would be the existing, uh, habitat areas. There's a shipping container here that separates the two where they store, uh, equipment and stuff for the bears. And come off that along here, and then it curves around and basically goes along the tree line. This tree line is right here, so the fence would come off the existing fence, up to a point here, follow this road. And then return back to the fence that's over here. And then about in this area is where we add another, uh, enclosure, that's half the size of the existing one. So fifteen by thirty with a ten by ten, what we call a shift, and six by eight mudroom.
What's the total square footage?
About eight thousand square feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so how close to the boundary line is that?
Okay, so you, it actually, uh, the boundary line bisects what we wanna do. Um, if you, if you look here, uh, the existing fence just tips over the boundary line here with. And I forget what year that that this was put in, so we actually have lot seven and lot eight involved in this. So.
Like, in our records, the ownership isn't quite identical.
Right, well, it's, it's, it's been watered down a bit, you you have the same owners for both pieces now. That is passed on from the previous generation, right now, it's in the works to get the ownership. Properly taken care of with the registry, uh, because it was in a trust.
Are you thinking about maybe merging them, the reason I'm bringing it up is because, um, we have setback requirements. And if it's gonna be in the setbacks, then, um, you know, we have to go to the C B A for variance or something. But if you were thinking about merging them, then the whole problem would disappear, so that's why I was asking.
Well, there's been some discussion about a lot line adjustment.
If I may.
Instead of a merger, uh, whether that would be from this piece coming down and including. The existing pens all on this piece, or extending the lot line up here to include this in this piece, so.
What if you just put an easement on lot, with that lot seven and eight?
Seven and eight.
What if you just got an easement to put the bear pen on the other lot?
You could do an easement, we still have.
You still have to go to C B A. Then set that. I I think, I think readjusting your lot lines would be the simplest way out.
I get a question.
Even if they're on, even if it's owned by the same person.
They, they are, yeah.
If you adjust them to meet the setback requirements, then you.
Now, the setback requirements you're talking about for the structure, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, because the fences, there there's no setbacks for the fences, is that correct?
Yeah, there is a. But it's only a foot for maintenance, I think it's one foot.
Oh, okay, so.
One foot off the property line.
It is for maintenance purposes, I believe, is what they.
Well, it doesn't say that.
Yeah.
I mean, it probably was meant that.
Maybe you should say it, I don't know why.
I don't, I don't know what the exact, where this exactly falls, cause this is just a sketch, you know, that on here. Um, this was surveyed last September, this this area, but at that point in time, we hadn't decided exactly where we thought that was going to go. So, this thing, this.
Problem getting a waiver, but I think it would be easier to get, to readjust the property line. Would do that.
But, yeah, I don't know where we're at, I'm not handling that part of it. I'm the project manager for this part of it, so. What is the setback with, on, on a lot with the existing structures for another structure?
Well, see, it's general use of the front strip, it's general use.
It's rural residential.
It's fifteen foot setback either way, whether it's in general use.
On the side?
So I probably.
Fifteen feet?
For both the general use and for the rural residential. See, like, right here, I just wanna show you. You know, this yellow color right here is the, unfortunately, they use yellow both to highlight the lot.
Right.
And to put the zone. So here's the general use zone.
Right.
And see the stripe goes right through here, and then this is rural residential, but the setback is the same, identical for the rural residential and for the.
Okay. Okay.
So that's what, I was looking for input on that, because again, we're at the conceptual part of this. And the other questions that I've got is when it comes to water and sewer, because really, i- it's very little what is takes place. And here, we've got one standpipe that they hook a hose to, to clean the area inside the enclosure, just, you know, a concrete base. And then there is a pool. The pool is four feet, bas- basically four feet by six feet by two and a half feet deep. So, on, on the application, as I was looking at it, I was trying to figure out, okay, what, where would that classify? A small jacuzzi? Is that how that would?
Well, we do an equivalency, that's kind of the same thinking that you're doing, you know.
Yeah, I think you take a look at how many gallons you use.
See how like water it is, and Bates is, you know, Bates is called work director.
I mean, I could figure the volume of that, that pool.
And he'll say it's, you know, you put more jacuzzi or tub or sink or whatever. So we would just do that.
Okay, are you gonna, do you change it relatively often, or is it?
As far as.
Do you change the water in it a lot, or?
Well, it, it depends. Of course, in the summer, the bears aren't even in there. They're, they're at the trading post, you know. In the pens by the gift shop. So essentially, those aren't even getting used, at least in this new section. You know, over here, we've got a couple bears that are in there that no longer are show bears, so.
Retirement.
Really, they don't, yeah, exactly. They're in retirement. So the only time that those pens would get used, the new expansion here would be in the off-season.
Vacation.
And it's, you know, most of that's the winter, so the water's shut down and nothing could be used.
I mean, it's, who, who was this? Yeah, so you just come into a Sleckman's meeting and say, this is the size, this is how often they're gonna be, it's gonna be used. I'm sure the Sleckman probably.
I think that's.
They don't even do that, they just do it in house.
So you do it in house technically. We, we would approve.
You know, we talk about it and say.
Usually, it's. Cut and dry. It's either a bathroom or kitchen or jacuzzi, and they just do the math.
Put a rear pump in for the spring outback.
Yeah.
Very would have done.
So, so the structure may or may not be within that fifteen foot setback?
Right. That setback is, it's, it's, there, there's room to play here, because there's a fence. It's hard to see on this, but the fence comes right along the back of this chicken container that's there. It's actually integral to the fence, so it's not shown in this. I don't know why he didn't put it in there, but. So, I'm assuming that fifteen feet, you know, we've got some room to move this structure, one way or the other. So if the structure has to go closer to get the fifteen feet from this boundary, so we.
I think that might be the easiest way, just to make the structure work within that.
Right, 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 because if, I mean, you'd have to flip this over to get the idea of the way it is.
They only.
So, here's the, you know, the boundary is somewhere, somewhere in here, because you've got the fifteen. I don't know if my scale's off, but it cuts through, I don't know how many feet away from the corner of this fence. So I'd have to see how close this is. I don't know if this is even at scale. None of this is.
But the current fence isn't necessarily on the border, is that correct?
Correct. Here's the current fence.
Yeah, okay.
But this new fence is in the red, right?
New fence is in the red.
So, that fence.
This, there, there is a fence there now. This is, this is the old fence.
The new fence, the, the new fence is gonna be on both lots.
It would have to be on both lots.
So how does that work with? With the one foot setback?
It was all in the other lot.
How do you work the one-foot setback of the fence on two lots? I don't think it's an issue, I just think.
It, to me, it's not an issue. The fence, you know.
Well, it becomes an issue if one lot gets sold and then.
Right.
But so you gotta protect against that somehow.
Exactly. I mean, so if the guy buying you a lot will have to deal with the bear pen.
I'm sure you get a written easement from the, from the other neighbor.
Probably.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe through an easement, that, but changing that, changing that lot line certainly does address all of the issues.
So they're ready to ease them to themselves.
If you change that lot line, that fence in that lot, then it all goes, e- everything goes away, fifteen foot setback. The, the, the one foot around the fence, to me, that.
A little more in survey cost.
Yeah, a little more survey, but it's cleaner that way, and everything's all on, kind of sort of on lot.
Right.
Stupid question number one. What if you put all in the other lot, number eight or whatever you call it?
Uh, I don't think the terrain ones itself, the way this does. It's flat, right there. And it's, it's not that big, you know. When you get into here, so you've got tree line.
Yeah.
Here.
They're like trees.
Starts to slip up and all that, so.
Then I'll have to jump another street. The escape artists.
Yeah. So I think those are the questions that I had. It was just, you know, how do I proceed with a, with an application?
I would think that if that, that structure was not in the setback. That would alleviate that problem. And to me, the fence could be dealt with with a, with a written easement between.
The owners.
Lot one and lot two, or seven and eight, or whatever you call it.
Yeah.
You know, that, that could be easy. You know, the, the clean way to do it would be a lot line adjustment, but now you're, you're talking about get an attorney, get a surveyor, pay the, you know, courthouse.
Right.
To register it. You may wanna go that, but if it's, if it's not within the setback, I don't see the need for it. If it is in the setback. Then that might be the real to go, because otherwise you would have to come in for a variance.
You have two hearings.
Well, yeah, and a button, notice a button.
A button.
A button notices, et cetera. In, in that case, I would think it would be easier to do a lot line adjustment.
Yeah.
But it depends on where that building falls or can.
Well, if you're gonna do a lot line adjustment, I mean, you might consider the future needs, if you had to ma- make an adjustment. Consider future needs or future bears, like, you might wanna make it bigger, you might wanna make it changed to.
Well, this is what we're going through right now.
Right.
You know, we've got, we've got trainers that are aging out, basically, and bears that are aging out, so where do we go from here?
Right.
So you got a discussion about that.
Changing that lot line may just, think about the future. You might be able to change that, so you'd have more room to be able to adapt to that as well.
Black media country that's going out west.
What's that?
The bear country out west, and they were retiring almost a bit.
Yeah, bear country, there's, there's a place out there called Bear Arizona too, but you're talking, it's a drive-through, so it's two hundred and something acres of.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, yeah. We don't have that.
Not yet.
Not, not to play with there. So, okay, I, I think I, I think I know what I need to do, but. Yeah. So, any other questions for me then? All right.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, we wanna do this this year.
You wanna mix up like this last time?
So is this the voluntary merger that's why not?
Don't tell OJ?
Didn't know it. Difference in our current decision. Not real interested.
Are the voluntary lot merger, so South Peak Development.
Yeah, we're doing it next week, because the money didn't come in.
I think that forty road is in the landing.
No, I was gonna say that.
Steve Wang sent the email, I assume he sent it to all of them. Pointing out that was in the landing.
That's a South Peak Development, that's a back forty road.
Right. Steve Wang picked up on that and said, that's the landing.
Thank you. So this one's next week?
Well, it's gonna be probably a bunch more.
We're ready to go back to the minutes between your twenty-six. You guys have an attention, we'll go to next meeting. Fine with that.
Chance to read it.
All right, yeah, yeah, pretty detailed. Wanna talk about storm water tonight? I wanna do that in another meeting.
Yeah, great. We'll be back in another meeting.
Give us the reader's digest.
Well, you storm water tonight?
You go, I don't care.
I'm exhausted, so.
Would that be a garden? Why don't, why don't we move them off to make? I mean, we just got this, everything tonight, you know, really didn't have a chance to look at anything, so.
And again, they were all, they were all conceptual, so they were quite.
Right. I'm not, I'm saying that, but it's just. Even conceptual, when you try and get all your thoughts together while you're looking at the same paperwork, the same like you just got.
Any public participation? Is there any other business?
Motion to adjourn?
So motion to adjourn. Joe, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, you already said yes, Joe, so.